There you go, there's one. Boy, look at you guys getting all quiet. We'll call a meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation? And Pastor Jeff Chipwood, could you please come forward on behalf of anchor Christian?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come to you today. We thank you for another beautiful day of life which you've given us. And Lord, today we ask for your wisdom and guidance upon the members of the council as they make decisions that impact other people's lives. Lord, I also thank you for those that serve in this community in many various ways to make it what it is. Thank you for their dedication and watch over them. And Lord, as we give you thanks for this nation, we also ask for watching over those who are serving in the military around the world to give us the freedom which we express here today. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Councilor Slackta, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It will be honored, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slackta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longcard.
Here.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right, and we will start this morning with public comment on agenda items. That's on agenda items only, please. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Bob Hilliard for the record, citizen of Bonita Springs and also a member of the Bonita Springs Lions Club. As you can see, over the past couple of weeks, I've put quite a few notes together. But after thinking this morning and coming forward, I feel that I need to talk from the heart rather than from a piece of paper and from words on a piece of paper. History is something that everyone wants to preserve. We have a historical society here that preserves things just like shown on the pictorial behind the diocese here. The Bonita Springs Lions Club has been a part of the history of this community well before this city was incorporated, starting back in 1962. For over forty years, we've run a successful market on Saturdays. And this market has provided funds that go 100% back into this community, supporting many projects such as the ball field that was built back in 1982, the Lions built it, Lions Pride Park, supporting the Assistance Office, the Literacy Council. Last year, we had conflict with another vendor wanting to come in and run a market. We got agreement from the council to continue our market while they worked on a solution. I had hoped, when I met with the council last year, that the solution would not be to create a new ordinance, but to keep the ordinance that was made for the green market, but to allow consideration for any, for any not-for-profit organization, a church, the Rotary, the Kiwanis, the Lions, to have this market and give them latitude with those vendors that they have supporting the community. Everything that the Lions Club makes goes back into this community. This year, our market on Saturday is losing money. Our Wednesday market supports our Saturday market. Our Board of Directors made a decision this year not to put funds into our reserves account so that we can continue to fund the charitable donations that we give to this city and community projects. We can't do that and continue to be survivors. So we come to you and ask you to please reconsider item L for local roots to have a market on Saturday and allow us the latitude to be able to have the market. Our market this year, we have two produce vendors, the rest are jewelry and knickknacks and so forth. Absolutely none of the food vendors that we've had in the past have come back to us. They're all over the promenade. So we please ask your support in helping us to help this community with funds that we provide to the less fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Lion, I'm Lion Catherine Lau, President of the Bonita Springs Lions Club and also a Bonita Springs resident. I'd like to add a few comments to Lion Treasurer Bob Hilliard's comments. This past Monday, as President and Committee Chair, we got together to discuss scholarships for graduating seniors this upcoming school year. And unfortunately, we had to make a difficult decision to cut our four four-year scholarships to two two-year scholarships. These are area students from Bonita Springs. This was a very difficult decision as a high school educator to have to make. These are the future of our community. We hope that they will come back and not only be part of the Bonita Springs Lions Club, but also future members of this community. As Lion Bob had mentioned, we give back, as you know, and we've mentioned numerous times, in scholarships, thirty-two thousand a year. We cannot longer do that because of the loss of our revenue from the Wednesday or the Saturday market. Some possible solutions to this might be adjusting the hours of Saturdays with 1:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. market, different location that maybe you all could help us with that might be more visible. Maybe Bamboo Village might be an option. We've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce of Bonita Springs since the 1960s and have given back yearly to the Bonita Springs community in the amounts of eighty thousand dollars. We can no longer do that if this market continues the way it is. This committee has been put together to decide what we can do and what we can't do any longer. We have never had to have a committee like that, ever. We've always been able to help out and make the money that we need to help this community be the best it possibly can be. So again, I ask you to please look at this further, possibly pull this item for today and let us sit down together as we have in the past and come up with a solution that is a win-win for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Donna Stone. I live at Worthington Country Club, and I'm afraid I'm not going to be very popular this morning. I am speaking against the proposed funding by the Bonita Springs City Council and the taxpayer of Bonita Springs to finance the Bonita Wonder Gardens. I question why the sweetheart deal. The Nature Place off of Terry Street did not get financing. Did the YMCA get financing? What about the proposed charter school at the YMCA or all of the other charter schools in Bonita? The Shy Wolf Sanctuary would like to get some property in Bonita Springs. They would be a huge asset to schoolchildren, teaching about animal conservation and protection. Shy Wolf would also bring students studying at the Florida Gulf Coast University. It would be a major tourist attraction, unlike the failing Wonder Gardens. Can the Shy Wolves group expect financing from the City Council? I would like to mention that the Worthington Country Club has a 501(c)(3) status. We do annual fundraising for various charities and programs. Can we also get matching funds to boost our charity donations to the community? What about the Bonita Springs Historical Society? Their endeavors to keep Bonita history alive is admirable. Can they expect a fund set up by City Council? I am curious as to why there has been no substantial money raised by the Wonder Gardens group before coming to you to show good faith equity. Why has there been no property assessment of the value of the Wonder Gardens in their proposal? Why is the property, what is the property's true value? Why are road impact fees being used when we have multiple road improvements and upgrades that need to be done in Bonita Springs? If the Wonder Garden Committee is so sure of the value of this property that does not make a profit now, why are they not doing fundraising efforts or get matching funds from various companies around town? This is a misguided endeavor that has no business being funded by the Bonita Springs taxpayer. Please protect the citizens from this investment. Its time has passed.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Deb McLean. I'm the publisher of the Banana Appeal. And I, too, object to financing the gardens, Everglades Wonder Gardens, but on a different reason. For sixteen years, I've covered city politics, and never have we given away money. This smells so close to the VR Labs fiasco where the county gave five million to a fledgling company that was barely dried ink at the state level, and they failed. And they foreclosed on the property and left the county without their five million. I personally want to read the loan vehicle, and I don't think you should vote on it today. It's, and I love gardens. If any of you have any memory, you know I support saving Calusa Indian mounds. I don't believe you should put large houses on the river there. And I support saving Botanic Gardens. I support saving the gardens at Shangri-La. However, I do not support this loan vehicle. I think it's wrong to use the taxpayers' dollars for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning. My name is Juan Romero. I'm representing the Lee County.
Look at you sporting that tie, man. That's really cool. Both ties, awesome. I'm going to get one of those. Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you.
Start your time over.
And, well, today in the agenda is the approval of the Mayor's Cup. This year is going to be the seven, the nine consecutive years we are doing this project, and seven for the ladies. It has been a very nice and successful tournament and helped us, all the city, and adults, children, and families getting together. And we just want to let you know, the program has been very successful, the players and the families. Bonita Middle School just gets the top champion on the Lee County based on all that evolution of the soccer on the city of Bonita Springs. All of that beautiful things never can happen if we don't have support from the Mayor and the City Councils. And of course, for Parks and Rec, special events, and the Maintenance Department. So we ask you to, you know, give us opportunity to continue to work and do these Mayor Cups as successful. And that's all we want to say today. Appreciate all you guys work hard and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning, Council. My name is Dennis Church, District Two, twenty-five years in Bonita Springs. I'm a fourth-generation native Floridian, and I'm a landscape architect. I grew up visiting places like Wonder Gardens, Jungle Gardens, Silver Springs, Sunken Gardens, Cape Hock Tree Inn, places in Florida. As I get older, I have a sense of value of the history of Florida and those kinds of places, and some that are still here and some that aren't. And as a landscape architect, I've learned the term sense of place and what that means. And you hear it as a very common term, but what we have here in downtown Bonita and especially in the Wonder Garden property is truly a sense of place, something that's worth preserving. And so when some members of the foundation asked me to help with preparing some exhibits, I was very happy to work on the exhibits and spend time on the property and measuring things and drawing. And I was happy to recruit Waldorf Engineering, who jumped in and did a bunch of beautiful exhibits, and I'm sure it will be in the presentation. And finally, you know, there's some concern, you know, about a loan, but you guys know the folks that are on this board. I know the folks. They know how to get things done for the community. There's not much risk here with this group of people behind this project. So I'm asking you to support the agenda items today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, guys. Martha Simons for the record. Okay, I'm all 110% behind this Everglades Wonder Gardens. Why? Why did we become a city? Because then we could have local control. Just what the steroid did last night, congratulations for everybody who was there, awesome, although they have our Lisa Pace. But we became a city to preserve those things that are essentially Bonita Springs and to improve and better it. What Dennis Church said was right. I think there's some misunderstanding about this loan, but I think that the folks that are a little afraid of it right now are going to be proven that their nervousness will go away when they see all the money raised. So also, lions got up and spoke. I'm a lion, so I don't have my jacket today. I'm going to find a dollar. But there is a solution to this. Adjust the hours, adjust the day, make it more flexible. The graciously, the havenics at the dog track offered them space, but they only said you can use this in the parking lot. They can't really move it up, you know, up near the corner. That's not going to really work. There has to be something we can do because this would be a great loss to the community for eighty thousand dollars. That's just the market that's making eighty thousand dollars. Of course, you know, they make a ton of money at the thrift store, so donate to the thrift store. And then lastly, on your errata sheet, you got a letter concerning the recommendations of the water task force. I hope that you'll do the monitoring. It asks to put an RFP out so that you get a wet season and a dry season. You could have had the dry season, but you didn't do it in time, so. But if you get an RFP out to get that expedited and so you can start monitoring by the fall, this fall, then you'll be one step ahead to getting all that work done. And I hope you'll take those recommendations to heart. And that's it. Have a great week and a great meeting, and the Wonder Gardens is the right thing to do. Thank you. I'll pull out a agenda item for local roots. Thanks. Send it back to staff.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Hi.
I'm Chloe DiVelasco. I represent local roots. We just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity and the consideration for coming back as a farmer's market for next year. We fully support having two markets. It's, we can't go against changing the time or date due to our other five to six markets we operate in Lee County. We have never approached any other markets for their vendors. All the vendors are, come to us because we run successful markets. It's pretty much it, but thank you for the consideration. We appreciate it.
Yep, thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Rosemary Putnam. I've been a resident here for twelve years here in Bonita. I'm a vendor at the Lions Club and have been for eight years. We were very, very successful previously until these group of people very unwisely came this year and said, welcome, we're back. Well, no, they weren't back because they were saying that they were, they were inferring that they were the Lions Club. And a lot of people in town thought they were supporting the Lions Club. And a lot of people were very, very disturbed, and they come to us now and say, you know, we finally found you. It's taken us this long to find our friends, our friends that we've been coming to for years. And, you know, we've been up at the dog track since mid-October, and it's March, and they're finally finding us. And as been said before from Bob and Catherine and the others, they've been looking for us. And our people have been stolen from us, from this other group who do not help us and are helping our students, the Leos, the Leos that we work with day in and day out, year-round, try to give them scholarships. These kids are poor, and we work with them. Now, two kids cannot go to college because their scholarship money has been taken away. Lots of other things have been taken away because this for-profit group, who they just said have four other places to go, well, let them go there. They don't need to be here and take our money away from our community. We have a poor community. Let that money come back to the Bonita Lions Club. Let us support our poor community. I had two homeless people come to me this week trying to find help that I'm trying to help them with. I'm from St. Leo's, too, and we have other members here in the audience from St. Leo's. We're trying to find our own people help that need it. Let's support our own community. Let's support the Lions Club. And you can do that by helping us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
Good morning.
My name is Grant Lundberg. And it looks unhopeful for golf courses. Listen to this discussion this morning about Wonder Gardens. We are approving this. That puts us down quite a bit. We were the people that came back to you many years ago, six years ago, and started asking for help. And then all of a sudden, we ganged up, and we had Wonder Gardens, we had the YMCA and other things that were going on. It was tough. But today, like I issued here a couple of weeks ago, things are building in the city of Bonita Springs. Now we sit before you and you sort of, I get the word back, that sort of rushed into this here thing and not giving anybody else a chance to have been before here and done what you's asked for. That big book, we did everything we could. We still do it today. We ask, we ask, we ask, we ask. We try to get investors, and we'd have no help ever, any of you people ever calling us and say, how's things going with the golf cars? Then all of a sudden, here we come. Here we got Wonder Gardens, boom, we're in there, they're getting their money. Now we're back again, and here we are. What are our chances of having this if you approve this? What are our chances coming back here with all the new residents, all the youth here waiting for high school to get built? What have we got to give them for recreation anymore? That, to me, is not a recreation area. Where does the money come? How do you support it? At least in golf, you go to all these golf clubs, they all are making money this year. They're turning away golfers. I just can't believe how you can take dollars here and not dollars there. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning. It's interesting. Everybody's asking for something this morning. Unfortunately, Ben is going to ask, too. Ben Hershinson, for the record. First of all, on the Wonder Gardens, there's a four-letter word, loan. That's all needs to be said. And the people supporting it, you know, they'll get the money, I'm sure, but the word is loan, it's not give. The reason why I'm here primarily is finally I see on the consent agenda, the construction of sidewalks on Paradise, long delayed for one reason or another. So obviously, I support that, and I'm sure the mayor will be signing that contract. Mayor, if I go off on a tangent, it has to do with Paradise Road, but just you'll tell me and I'll come back and I'll speak at the end. But one other thing relative to Paradise Road, it's wonderful that we have Shangri-La, the new east-west road, you know, back, which is terrific between Old Forty-One and Imperial. The concern that I have as a resident in that area, and a number of us met with Matt Feeney last week very briefly, is to look at that intersection of Shangri-La and Paradise. The sidewalks will increase, certainly safety for the kids who are out there in the dock of the, you know, six o'clock in the morning waiting for their school bus. And the issue is to me that that three, that I'm suggesting, or at least the city, to look into the possibility of a three-way stop. There is a stop at Paradise. I usually, when I stop, I kind of hold back because people cut that corner from the coming, they're going east on Shangri-La from Old Forty-One, and they whip around that corner. There are a lot of kids out there, and sidewalks will help, but I hope that the city can consider the possibility. I know it's involved studies and all this other stuff, but if we had a three-way stop there, it would slow down that traffic there. It is a major thoroughfare now, and it's great that it's there. But again, the emphasis here is safety, and I'm looking at my City Council, let's see if we can expedite the possibility of looking in as a three-way stop. There's a stop at Paradise, I'm suggesting, and others have as well, a stop at either end of Shangri-La so that when they come to that intersection, they slow down, they slow down. Thank you, and sorry to be asking, but that's the way it goes sometimes.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor. My name's Adam Roggenberg, and I recently moved to southwest Florida probably four years ago because I own and operate a event company up in the Midwest. I'm on the road probably 80% of the time, and my wife and kids live down here. And the reason, I wasn't going to stand up today, but the reason I'm going to stand up and say something is we're looking for on agenda item number nine, I never, or D, I'm sorry. We never, never have produced an event down here in southwest Florida, but we produce large events up north and throughout the United States. We're going to fund an enormous event down here next year, or would like to, at the dog track, spend thousands of dollars in advertising throughout the state of Florida to drive people to Bonita Springs. The reason why I stand up here today is one of the things that we pride ourselves in in doing these events is giving back to the community. I see a club here in the Lions Club that I haven't talked to and I was planning on talking to, but we'd like to get your local charities more involved in our events. We donate six figures to specific charities in multiple cities throughout this country. And I just thought I'd bring that to your attention today as this is on the agenda. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else this time on any agenda item? Hi.
I'm Susan Newlig. I'm President of the Garden Club in Bonita Bay, and I just wanted you to know that we had an event on Monday to raise money for the Wonder Gardens already to pay you back as quickly as we can. We had people from all over the community, not just Bonita Bay people, but we had forty-nine walk-ins from Bonita Springs and other areas that came to our event. We had almost 300 people, and we are giving to the Wonder Garden about $5,000. And that's just the first of our many things that we hope to do. We hope to find people willing to give money in larger amounts than that to help quickly pay you back. So I'd like everyone to understand that there are an awful lot of people in this community that love the Wonder Gardens. We were amazed. We had to find chairs all over the place for all the people that came. And so I think you've done a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful little gem of a garden. The Garden Club, of course, loves it, but, you know, we save animals and we have a wonderful, wonderful place for people to visit and to care about right here in this community. We'd really hate to lose it. Our speaker was Rick Smith, whose father wrote A Land Remembered, and he told about all the research his father did in Florida to write his books about Florida. And I hope you'll read some of them because if you do, you'll realize how important it is to save the gems of old Florida that go way back. So please don't consider canceling our money out because we'll get it back to you, we promise.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item.
Hello, everyone. John Pano, CGT Kayaks. I'm one of the downtown merchants. I should say historic downtown merchants. The Wonder Gardens is the anchor of our historic downtown district. Historically significant is the first zoo in southwest Florida, first to set up a breeding program for the endangered panther and black bear. Ecologically, the Wonder Gardens stands as an ecoeducational facility, teaching many newcomers and locals about the wonders of our ecosystem. Economically, it attracts visitors from all over. They visit the Wonder Gardens, and they see the Imperial River, and they get an opportunity to take a paddle back in old time with us, or in Florida, old-time Florida with us. When they get back from their trip on the river, they ask about places to eat. They ask about places to bike. They ask about fishing. They ask about just touring that area. It's a very, very important part of that downtown, historic downtown area. For the city, it offers an opportunity to make more money on money not being used and at the same time to help revitalize this very important historic downtown district. I commend the city for this plan, and I wholeheartedly support it. John Pano, CGT Kayaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, wish to speak to any agenda item, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Dennis Gilkey. I'm a resident of Bonita Springs and have been here since 1984. And I'm not going to steal Trish Leonard's thunder, who will be the presenter for the Bonita Wonder Gardens, Inc. I am Vice President of that group. I've been involved in a lot of different community fundraising issues over the years. I was co-chair of the fundraising to build the Bonita Springs Chamber of Commerce building and also co-chair to build the YMCA and actually negotiated the site that was donated for the YMCA. We have a group that will pay you back. The excitement, the buzz that we have is just tremendous, but we have, this is something very special. It's a special location. But also, there's three things that we have here that you do not have anywhere else in Bonita Springs. One is the botanical gardens that will be available for the public enjoyment. The other one is the zoological aspect of the gardens that will be available for public enjoyment. And the third thing is going to be a very special, a natural history museum with the artifacts that the pipers had collected over the last eighty years that are just phenomenal. And when you see these, you're going to be impressed. Some will go just for that. So we're going to have a great facility. It'll be a world-class facility. This is a loan. It is not what was quoted, it's not This is a loan, it is not what was quoted, it's not matching funds, and it is not a giveaway of the money. It is a loan, and we very much appreciate it. If it weren't for you, this facility would probably be closed down within a couple months and purchased for commercial use. The 168 trees, the 15 structures, the buildings, and the pools, and the, all the things are there now, aren't of any benefit for a commercial developer. For us, it's 100% usable, and we very much appreciate your support. We're excited about it, it is in the heart of Benita Springs, it is our heart, it is our heritage, and thank you for helping save and preserve the wonder. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward on any agenda item. I suppose I'll wait for this guy.
Good morning. I'm Gary Price. I'm a voter and taxpayer. I love that every chance I have to say that.
We have something in common, huh?
I want to give council a compliment. In your ability to borrow road impact fees during that period of time, they would be otherwise dormant in a bank account somewhere, because it takes time to prioritize design and go to contract on road projects. And I think this is a unique opportunity to utilize those funds at no cost to the taxpayers, yet to bring a, keep a facility that's 79-years-old, that is the center of Benita, and I'd venture to say that caused the old Benita to build up around it. So, I compliment the council on its foresight and its ability to get a double use out of funds that would otherwise be dormant, and I thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? On any agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment on agenda items, and we are two proclamations and presentations. And we have a very special one to start out with here. For 10 years of service, Connie, are you here? I bet you are. You always are here. Connie DeBruno, please come forward. I tell you what, she's, it is so nice that there is someone in City Hall that is as big a piece of work as I am, I got to tell you what. This young lady is so much fun, and it just brings a lot of joy upstairs and a lot of humor up there that I got to tell you, you need every once in a while at a work site. You have been just great to work with here. I can't believe it's only 10 years.
Oh, I know.
I know, it's weird, isn't it? I know. Anyway, presented to Connie DeBruno, 10 years of service as of the 28th day of February 2015, an appreciation and recognition for 10 years of public service to the city of Benita Springs. That doesn't say near enough about what you do for us. Everyone, please give her a round of applause. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
No.
Somebody write that down. Somebody write that down.
That was the first.
Congratulations, Connie.
Yes, awesome.
And on we go to errata sheet number two, accept the mayor's challenge for safer people. And this looks like Councilmember Janet Martin. Are you going to do a presentation?
I actually am not. I'm going to invite Ms. Carmen Monroy from FDOT, and also Darla Laturna from Bike Walk Lee, and I don't know if Jen Hagan from Community Development, to make a short presentation. I apologize for this being a walk-on, but it is time-sensitive, so, thank you, girls, ladies.
Good morning. I'm Darla Laturna with Bike Walk Lee, and it's a pleasure to be here this morning to speak in support of this challenge to the city, to have safer streets for all residents, but particularly bikers and walkers. If you're a member of the MPO Board, you've heard me speak about this initiative several times. This is a national initiative launched by the Secretary of Transportation to improve bike and pedestrian safety across the country. They were quite surprised, frankly, that with national statistics of overall road crashes, or I should say fatalities, going down, the trend in bike and pedestrian was going up. And so, the department decided they really needed to focus, redouble their efforts. And since Secretary Fox was the mayor of Charlotte, he thought, "I know how we really need to fix this problem, it's the local officials." And so, he's challenged the mayors and public officials across the country to join him in a year-long focus on improving biking and pedestrian safety. So, you know, there's, Florida is one of the most dangerous states in the country, and southwest Florida is one of the most dangerous parts of Florida. So, we have a lot of work to do, and we think it's really important for our community leaders to be part of this effort. So, we think this is really an opportunity for you. There are so many good things that you have underway with your complete streets policy and getting ready to implement it, your downtown redevelopment project, your Benita Beach Road visioning, the implementation of recommendations that came out of the League of American Bicycleists' recent visit, and your recent announcement of participation in the Blue Zones Initiative. So, this is really an opportunity for elected officials to use the bully pulpit, if you will, to raise awareness and show commitment to really making headway on this problem. So, we hope you'll support this initiative, and I want to thank the committee and Councilwoman Martin for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Jennifer Hagan, Community Development. This challenge provides the city an opportunity to tailor the challenge activities to where we can make the most impact, and also to capture some of our previous activities that we have already accomplished here in the city through our complete streets policy. It also provides an opportunity to share best management practices through peer learning exchanges, and provides additional group technical assistance that we may not otherwise have, without participating in this program. So, just wanted to provide that information as well.
Thank you.
Good morning. Carmen Monroy, Florida Department of Transportation.
Hi, Carmen.
Good morning. And on behalf of FDOT and District Secretary Billy Haddaway, we commend the city of Benita Springs for taking this on. When we heard that this item was going to be brought before you, we wanted to make sure that we were here to support you. There are numerous city councils and municipalities that are taking on this challenge, but Benita Springs is the first one to take this action formally and bring it forward. So, we're here to support you and commend you for your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, at this point, what I would like to do is, the city of Benita Springs Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Committee has asked me as their liaison to ask the mayor, the council, and the city to accept the mayor's challenge for safer people and safer streets in a call to action by U.S. Department of Transportation, U.S. DOT Secretary Fox, for mayors and local officials to take significant action to improve safety for bicycle riders and pedestrians of all ages and abilities over the next year.
Is that a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll second.
Easy, easy. Do we still have to vote? I know, it's a rhetorical question. Bam, see, who reads Reader Digest? I do, right? I know rhetorical and stuff like that. Anyway, we have a motion in a second. God, staff, do you have any comment about the, oh, what this might cost, or the ramifications of this, or whether you want to do this, or?
We're in favor of this, yes. I think, I think it's been said clearly that we're already down the road, so to speak, on a number of these initiatives, and I think we can handle this. Yes, sir.
Good, good deal. All right. Any other comments, questions? Hi. It's legal, right? Okay, good. Yeah, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Okay. There you go. And now, we are to item C. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, council members, good morning.
Good morning.
A lot has happened on the Wonder Gardens in the last four weeks, since it was first announced about the opportunity to provide a loan to the Benita Wonder Gardens to purchase the facility. There have been a number of meetings, but what I wanted to go over was what's on the agenda, as well as make a few points publicly and get them on the record. So, in front of you today are two items to be considered by the council. One is an agreement with the Benita Wonder Gardens for the loan itself, and number two is a resolution actually authorizing a loan from the Road Impact Fee Fund to the General Fund. And at that point, that automatically authorizes through the agreement, the loan of the $3.5 million to the Benita Wonder Gardens. So, those two items are to be voted on today in one way or another. There is an official sales contract signed by Mr. Piper with the Benita Wonder Gardens, and that facility and that transaction is set to close on April 13th. I wanted to bring to light some of the things that we've heard maybe publicly, that haven't, maybe not have been addressed today, but one of them, the question was raised is, well, why not the trust for public lands? And that was really not a viable option, only because their, their final goal in everything is to put land in public ownership. We are not talking about public ownership here. As you've heard over and over, this is a loan, we are looking for this to be in a nonprofit corporation's ownership. City does not want to own or operate the Wonder Gardens, but we feel that the nonprofit certainly has the capability of doing that. Second thing we heard about is appraisals. Well, where's, where did this number come from? Well, I have seen an appraisal for the land and the buildings at $3 million. I've seen an appraisal for the landscaping, and especially the trees, within the facility of $1.8 million. So, that's $4.8 million right there. Those numbers do not include the artifacts that you've heard talked about this morning, including 16-foot Old Joe, or whatever the alligator is that they've got stuffed out there. But I actually thought about bringing Joe in here, I think that would have been interesting this morning. But, so those numbers do not include those artifacts, which are a part of the transaction. Now, you'll recall four weeks ago, that we talked about really three contingencies the city needed to look at, to make sure we were comfortable as the bank in this deal. Number one, that the boundary surveys came back accurate and clean, and they did. That the environmental testing came back clean, and it did, no problems with environmental, and the title is clear to the property. All right, so those three contingencies have been satisfied by the Benita Wonder Gardens through their due diligence. I have also seen a business plan, I've also seen a five-year cash flow operating budget proposed, and I've also seen a capital campaign plan. And so, I will tell you from my experience and my professional regards with this, due diligence has been accomplished, from the city's perspective, by the Benita Wonder Gardens. And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce Trish Leonard to come up and make a presentation on behalf of the nonprofit itself. Trish?
Good morning.
Morning.
I have a little cold, sorry. Good morning, Mayor, council. For the record, Trish Leonard, president of the Benita Springs Wonder Gardens. We have been meeting our board of directors, many who are here, raise your hand if you're here, board, and advisory committee. These folks out here are community leaders, they have been meeting tirelessly for months, trying to accommodate and to do everything that the city has asked us to produce for the Wonder Gardens. We have gone a little bit further than that. One is, in addition to doing all of the due diligence, we have met out there, out at the gardens with the fire department, we have met, we are meeting with the code enforcement next week, I know Gary's working on that. We are trying to get, we had a contractor come out to look at the facilities. So, we're doing a lot for, to, for our due diligence. We are doing fundraising, but we couldn't really fundraise until we owned the property. So, that's why, I wanted to make sure that the gals out here, or folks out here, that wanted to know that, once we own the property, then we could get into our capital campaign. I will say that we do have a $100,000 pledge, that's already in our, even before the capital campaign is opened. We had an architect from Naples who came in, along with Dennis Church and Wardoff Engineering, design preliminary, and I don't know if anybody can see these or not, of what the Wonder Gardens will look like, conceptually, right now. And if you would, I mean, it's like night and day, and keeping with the colors of your downtown area, we plan to, you know, break down the road barrier, or the wall barrier where you could see the river, so you'll be able to see the river from both sides, and you're going to have a hall of wonder with children, this will be an educational facility as well. We plan to have educational opportunities, we plan to have weddings, or events, or, you know, fundraisers on the property. This is just beautiful, to what we, what our vision is. And our goal is to pay you back, if we can, before the three years, because really, we need this just to get started for what we're planning to do. We are really excited about what's going to happen. I don't like to really point out one, but this gal came in yesterday, and she didn't, she's from Benita Springs, lived here a long time, dropped off a check and said, "I want to help." And she came today, we don't even know, maybe now, and now we do, but we didn't. But, I mean, that's the kind of thing we're getting all the time. We are, it's getting busier every day there, I know I'm there, and when I'm, I want to get on the cash register, because there's so many people, you know, standing in line. So, I believe that this is the right thing to do, and I really want to say thank you to all of you, and to Carl, really, and John Spear, who's done so much work for us, our pro bono. I mean, I don't want you to think of we're all making money here, or not, but, you know, we are very excited about what's going on. Now, we will be developing programs this summer, we're going to be doing memberships and sponsorships, and we are applying for grants once we have the facility. Again, we can't do anything until we have the actual facility, and we will be partnering. I mean, I want to see the YMCA kids come, I want to see the New Horizons childrens come, we want to see the kids come and see and feel, and do whatever we need to do. But really, for the most part, it is the community, it's our heritage, and we really want to preserve something that's so very special. And for those of you who have not been to the Wonder Gardens, listening or out there, please stop by and see us. I think you'll be amazed when you go, when you open up the front door and go on beyond that. Other than that, we do have a capital campaign meeting next week, so we will be doing our capital campaign this fall, but in the meantime, we will be raising money throughout the summer. And we do have a chair of our fundraising committee, which is Milda Vavetta, she spoke last week, or last month, and so, you know, we believe that we are doing our due diligence part. So, I don't know if you have any questions? It's, we didn't put it on a slide, but just, we'll leave these up here if you want to look at them. It's not all to scale, but at least it gives you an idea what we envisioned for the Wonder Gardens and for Benita Springs.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Trish? No?
I'd like to say something. I had the opportunity to meet with Trish and Dennis Gilkey, and some of my questions, or they weren't, when I asked them the last time I was here, I was concerned about the things that we've, Dennis has already talked about, and I was, I've been reassured, based on numbers and facts, that this is a go, and I'm really excited about it, that's possible for Bill Longkart to be excited. Only at home, I guess, but it's, it's.
All right, all right, that's enough of that, okay?
The circumstances, and looking at it from a business point of view, were my only concerns, and you have satisfied everything in terms, for me personally, about that in a very detailed way, which wasn't available when I asked for documentation two weeks ago or three weeks ago. But it'll work out, and I'm very confident that it'll be a wonderful place.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Trish? Trish, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carl?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Audrey now, who will go through the brief description of the agreement points. Audrey?
Thank you, I thought you were, okay. First of all, if you go to the second page of the green sheet, I pretty much have a one-page summary, instead of going through the 18 pages of the green sheet. I figured that would be a little easier on you. The borrower will be Benita Wonder Gardens, which is a nonprofit corporation, and you've heard from them, in the amount of $3.5 million, and that includes the $310,000 down payment that was provided previously at your prior city council meeting. The collateral will be the Everglades Wonder Gardens, the lands, buildings, animals, plants, artifacts, and the city will receive a 2% simple interest based on the payments. The maturity of the loan is for three years, with the term being 39 months. The loan doesn't start right away, they get a time to close, and with the parties both commencing, the loan starts once the parties sign the agreements, and it ends on June 30th, 2018. Payment schedule is listed there. It's, again, it's a simple interest of 2%. $500,000 principal will be the first payment, it'll be an annual payment, June, for the 1st, June 1st of 2016, with interest of $78,200. $78,246.58. On June 1st, 2017, the Benita Wonder Gardens will pay the city $1 million with $60,000 interest, because there's less money now borrowed. And then on June 2018, that will be the final payment of $2 million with a $40,000 of interest. In order to loan the money, we are requiring that they sign an agreement, along with a promissory note and a mortgage that will be recorded. We'll pay doc stamps and tangible tax. It's not something in our city capacity where we can avoid that. The agreement has certain terms. It requires that they provide us with a business plan annually, and that's Exhibit B to the agreement. If you go all the way back to the last page of the agreement, you'll see what the contents of that exhibit is supposed to be. There are also restrictive covenants put on the land, putting us not like a lender as much now as a city. We have certain restrictive covenants. Now, one of those restrictive covenants has changed while we've been working on this agreement. So I just want to bring your attention to, I believe it's paragraph three. The language that has changed, there is still for the botanical garden, the restrictive covenant that is listed in that agreement, that they are, and this survives the term of the agreement, they are to use that property primarily as a botanical garden, zoological park, aquarium, museum, and our roadside attraction, and it goes into gift shop, and I don't need to reread the whole sentence there unless council wishes me to get that pathetic, but the pictures here would all fall within the lines of that restrictive covenant. There is another structure on the property. Depending on when you came to Benita, you may see different things from it. I think of it as a restaurant building, because when I came to Benita, it was the former restaurant. It was used as a law office previously, and I believe a real estate office also. So the building has had different uses. It was never integrated as part of the Wonder Gardens. It wasn't someplace that you could have a meal while you were at the Wonder Gardens. It's external to the development. So we did end up having to negotiate that restrictive covenant. Because we are doing this for economic development purposes, loaning the money, we have added a new restrictive covenant, and I will read that in full to you, which states, "For a period of no greater than 10 years from approval of this agreement, the city manager or designated will have authority to pre-approve any tenant leasing the existing commercial structure, former restaurant, to ensure that the use is consistent with economic revitalization of the downtown area in consideration of the goals and objectives of BWG, Benita Wonder Gardens." So that was added during negotiations Monday. Going into the other restrictive covenants, obviously, we require that they cannot transfer the property during the course of the loan. They, we do want to have potentially historic designation. There is no time limit on it, but there is some availability of funding, depending on what can occur. And we have agreed to a zoning overlay that prohibits any residential development on the property, with exception to the existing caretaker cottage, if that's desired to continue for residential. I will say that in talking with community development, my understanding is that the existing zoning overlay already prohibits residential development. So that's already on the property. There are other requirements of the loan. One is that the city is to have two seats on the Board of Directors. One will come from council, another from staff. Council will have the prerogative of appointing the member from council to the seat, and city manager will have the same prerogative to appoint one of his employees. My understanding is the finance director is who he anticipates doing this. This is only during the term of the agreement. After the term of the agreement, the Benita Wonder Gardens may choose whoever they want for their Board of Directors. It's just because we want to be able to have access to know what's going on. The Board of Directors does have autonomy in their spending. You know, we're not, we're here as a lender, as a detached party. They are not part of the city. There is no intent to make them part of the city, so they are required to have different things in place. One of the other things that we are still working on, in fact, if I looked quiet earlier, it's probably because I was working on it, is the insurance clause. I received some proposed language at 11 o'clock last night. I had to do some modifications. I do know that our risk manager has looked at it, and the language is sufficient. Read it all to you, but it's about a two-page. I'd rather print that out if you need to see the insurance, but it is requiring a typical mortgage-type insurance, that during the term of the loan, they'll protect the assets of the city and name us as an additional insured to protect our interest as the lender. That will again, of course, disappear once, I hope they still get to keep insurance, but not because of protection of the money issue. I believe that's pretty much it, if you have, now, again, from here, once council approves the funding participation agreement, I will finalize the agreement, consistent with our discussions and consistent with the documentation. There's also a promissory note and also a mortgage. They will record those when they do the land transaction. When looking at the title policy, or title commitment, I'm sorry, that is an obligation in order for them to get the money to do the closing. They have to turn in those paperwork. Of course, before they're able to get the money, they need to sign off on this agreement, as well, council.
Okay, good. Questions? Yes?
Not necessarily of Audrey, but maybe Carl. But either way, Carl, you had touched on the survey. Could you elaborate on that a little bit, and the environmental? Yeah, I know you said they checked out, but I was just, wanted to ask. Further, what? Clean as a whistle? Because I know we had talked about.
There were some encroachments, but I would call them minor encroachments. They're, on the sign, the sign does go into the right-of-way a little bit. The nice thing is, we control the right-of-way. So, so there is a slight encroachment there. There was in the legal description, the legal description that was utilized by the Pipers needed to be corrected. They thought that they owned a public road. We had to clip in a portion, or take out a portion, clip the property where there is public right-of-way on back, it's called Baxter Road. So it would be, looking at that picture, and that's a conceptual, so it's difficult. It'd be after the, well, after the banyan tree, the restaurant, and then, so figure about a foot after that picture would have to be corrected. As to the environmental audit, I reviewed it. The property is near a property that did have some environmental pollution. Of course, the property itself never created the pollution. The environmental audit would, does say that it is, the term we use is clean, but it's within the norms of groundwater of what you would expect in that area.
Audrey, going back to the boundaries, those are minor issues?
Everything is minor. So there's like a minor encroachment. I believe there's a fence encroachment, and there's a sign encroachment, but they're, they're minor. The, the survey, again, through discovery and good practices of the surveyor, a small portion of the property they thought they owned actually is owned by the public, the road, and that was just cleaned up.
Okay.
And the title is clear?
Title's clear.
Okay. Any other questions? Steve?
Yeah. For the board, Trish, may I ask, if, if, during this three-year period, I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable about gaining the funds. My concern is operational. Is the board also responsible for the operation of the Wonder Gardens?
We are responsible for the operations, but we will have an operations manager.
So what is the forecast budget for operations?
As far as what, I'm sorry.
Well, do you have an annual budget?
Yeah, we do. I don't have it with me.
That's all right.
Yes, we do. I have a five-year budget.
My concern is, yeah, my concern is, if it goes defunct, if something would happen, the economy goes bad, how do you intend to keep the funds coming in from the public to fund the loan if it's not operational?
Right. Well, our goal will be to take the property and have naming rights, so actually, a lot of this is going to be naming rights to the, to the garden itself. And, you know, honestly, I don't know. I mean, I mean, I know, but as far as if it goes defunct, we don't plan to let that happen, Steve.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
And my concern is, in contingencies.
Right.
If, if there's a, if there's a loan issue because it's not operational, I assume, we'll assume, we'll take the property, but I would prefer you keep running properly.
We want to keep it running. Yeah, we will keep it running properly.
Okay, all right.
And we have to report that back to Carl as well.
I see a big gun coming up.
Thank you. He's behind me. He's our finance guy.
If I might follow up real quick, before Dennis jumps in, is, the, the plan has never been for operations to fund the repayment of the loan. Okay? That's going to be done through the capital campaign. All right? Operations will not fund the repayment of the loan, so.
And I, and I ever thought that operations would, but I did want to know what the operational budget was, that's reasonable, and it accounts for an overhead, that it's got to be there when, there are volunteers, obviously, but I just had a question, so Dennis?
Let me just supplement to what Trish and Carl said. The, the operational aspect, right now, the, the annual gate number is about 25,000 people per year. We expect that to go up over the next five years, probably about two and a half times, about 60,000 people, hopefully more. So that, the, the operational revenues are partially the gate, partially memberships and sponsorships, partially grants, and also, we're going to have a slew of volunteers helping, so some of the staffing requirements will be done through volunteer, volunteer corps. But, so there'll be a series of, of revenue sources, and yes, we have a five-year operating budget that, that increases both revenue and expenses over the next five years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to go to Bill, and I'll come back to you. Bill?
Just a comment, and I had, I did see in writing these, the estimates and so forth, so everything, the plan that I saw was professionally done and is going to work based on the quality of the people that are going to be running that place. And there's, I don't have any qualms about that. Before, I did, when it was first presented, because of the business, things that have to be in place, and I saw everything that was in place.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
I had touched on it briefly, just on the way in this morning, but the grant writing segment of this, I know, obviously, that's speculative, but could somebody comment on who will be doing the grant writing and elaborate on that a bit, please? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Robyn Demadia. I'm a Collier County resident, but I'm the Director of Marketing for the Benita Wonder Gardens. For the past 24 years, I've been a freelance journalist and marketing consultant, and I am a grant writer. I have worked for a number of organizations doing their grant writing. I taught a grant writing workshop at the Community Foundation of Collier County, and so I have probably about 10 to 15 years' worth of grant writing experience. I'm ready to go with all the marketing ideas, all the grant writing, all the fundraising. We are just waiting to own the asset. I've been affiliated with Connecticut Spirits Zoo for 25 years. I'm a Connecticut resident, so I was Director of Marketing at the Von Lee Big Arts Center. I was Director of Marketing at Rickory Bay National Estuarine Research Reserve. I'm very familiar with attractions marketing. Just so excited for your support to help us get to the next phase.
Oh, wow. You guys need to keep her.
[laughter]
All right, very impressive. Anyone else? Any other comments? Let's see, Audrey, do we need to make two separate motions here, or can they be combined?
My understanding at this point, we're only talking about item B1. Item B2 will be explained by the city manager following, unless you wish for him to do both, and then do it as one.
I explained them both, and?
I think you explained them both, so we can, we can approve both, right? If we were so desired. Is there, council, what's your pleasure? How would you like to do this?
Move to approve.
Move to approve which? Both?
Both.
Okay, and that would be, let's see, that would be C, and then the other one underneath it there, both of those, the resolution. Yeah, okay, good. We have motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Motion, a second? Any other discussion, questions?
Mayor, if I may. First of all, I'd like to thank whoever the donor was this morning, and I also want to thank John Spear for his work on this. I know George is looking down, and you'd send, very proud son, and you've made numerous donations to our community, and I thank you very much for that.
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
All right, well done, council. I just, I just want to thank the group involved in this. This has been something that's a long, long, long time coming here. The city has, in various different ways, tried to figure out how to keep this in semi-public hands or in public hands. One way didn't, didn't work out, another way didn't work out. We kept trying and trying in some different way. And this group of people, this very diverse, very powerful group of people, just powerful individuals from across the community, all over, these aren't people who live around the, the Wonder Gardens necessarily, or anything like that. They're people from all the community, came together for this singular purpose. And this is what made this happen. And in the city's interest in this, and I, I, just like probably, I would imagine, every one of you did not like the idea of being a bank and all that, didn't like it, didn't like it at all. But when you really think about how invested this community is, not just the city, how invested the city and its community and the properties surrounding this, we've got a lot of money at stake here. We've got a lot of money invested in this downtown redevelopment. This is a key property. If we didn't get this under control, it wasn't going to happen. So I see this as a vehicle. This is, you know what, on the other side of the property, what we did, we bought the property, and we're looking forward to selling it back to, at some point in time, some of us are, to, to an individual who do economic development. This is just kind of the opposite of that. We're, we're allowing that to happen and allowing this to get into, to a not-for-profit's hands, which is what we like. So I think that this is a, this is kind of a, hopefully, maybe a one-in-a-time kind of a deal here, but I think that it, it's just amazing that it was able to get done. So well done, everybody. Yes. And we are to the consent agenda. Council, what is your pleasure? We have items A through what?
M.
A through M, sizable.
I'd like to pull B and L.
B and L? We're pulling items B and item L.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, approve the remainder?
Second.
And there's a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slackta.
Aye.
Okay, item B. Mike?
Well, item B is about the sidewalk project on Paradise Road, and it was brought up today by Ben Hershenson about the possible need of having a three-way stop sign at that intersection. I've had other constituents come up and address that also. So I was just wanting to hear from staff if that's something we could look at to make that intersection a little safer, because Paradise is a pretty busy road there, and there's quite a few other stop signs already on Shangri-La.
For the record, my name's Matt Feeney, Public Works Director. Yes, sir, actually, we met with some residents from Paradise. I was working on preparation for the, the overall traffic plan update for the city, and part of the plan that was done back in 2008 was to evaluate areas for stop signs. So it was fortuitous that we met with, with the folks from Paradise, because I think we could roll that right into that study and have them look at that intersection. Stop signs are a fairly simple thing. You count the traffic, and you, you meet a warrant, or you do not. Other than that, if we want to accelerate it, we, we certainly could. It would, it would be at a little more expense, given what, what pricing I do have for the overall study, but we certainly could accelerate that. We might gain a couple of months' time in, in being able to address their concerns about a stop sign there.
Are the studies always needed?
Yes.
I've heard that there's a couple intersections that got stop signs without studies.
Well, in, in this case, we would want to evaluate the conditions that are going on there. Yes, sir.
Depends on your definition of study, I think.
Well, wouldn't a study be putting a stop sign there, seeing if it works? And that's one way to study it.
More of an experiment, I would think.
If you'd like to endorse that, we certainly could do.
What kind of additional expense are we looking at to expedite it?
Probably on the order of $5,000 to $8,000.
I, I think that in, in Mass defense and in Public Works defense, what they don't want I think that in mass defense and in public works defense, what they don't want to do, they're very responsible people, they're very professional people, and what they don't want to do is create a condition that's more dangerous than what exists there presently. First rule, do no harm. So I think it's legitimate to allow them to go ahead and at least do a cursory look into those kind of concerns, and at least feel comfortable doing that. Now, there was, when we put stop sign, there didn't used, believe it or not, there didn't used to be a stops, or a three-way stop or four-way stop at Matheson and Dean. There didn't used to be one there. And there didn't used to be one there at Ragsdale and Matheson. That's hard to believe at this point. Those worked out extremely well. However, there was a lot of trepidation involved. I suspect that this will be really similar. Once we get past that and get everybody to where they feel at least that this is something we can try, I think that this will work out. But I think we owe it to them to look at it.
We recently concluded our citywide traffic counts, and obviously with the opening of Shangri-La Road, it changed the conditions, which has probably exacerbated the condition that the residents have seen. I don't have the data back from those counts. That's really the critical component in being able to hand over to a traffic engineer to evaluate what's going on with the intersection. I expect it, here within the week, the counts are completed. And that probably will keep the cost of having someone take a look at it and say, yes, it's warranted to a minimum. But in general speaking, those are the kind of expenses we experience.
What are the two timelines expedited and non-expedited?
Non-expedited would probably be six months from now. Expedited, we could probably have a recommendation, given the data being received, within a month's time.
Okay, Peter?
I was just gonna say, I think Ben was looking at me, but you know, that intersection, if the north side of the street is four and the south side is two, I'm just kind of being funny there for a second, but if Matt and Carl check and Ben Hirschenson check your inboxes, because I've already sent an email to this effect to look into it, so let's, thanks for talking about it, Mike, and let's take a look, see what we see. Traffic counts.
Can we take a look at expediting it, then?
Sure. Counsel, would you like him to expedite the process? Yeah, I don't see any harm in that. Matt, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good, good. Alright, and that's part of that, and you have anything else under that, beneath Item B?
No, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Thank you, Matt.
Second.
We have motion to second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye. And we have Letter L. Mike?
Well, this one's the permit to, for local routes to operate, the farmer's market. Last year, we'd done an ordinance on being able to have the two different organizations have the same day, you know, we'd hope for different days. But the main concern was that both, or, you know, would be able to run and be, and make money. Well, like you just said a moment ago, Mr. Mayor, the first rule is to do no harm. Well, it kind of looks like we did harm with this ordinance. So I would like to pull this from being voted on today, so we can kind of look more into what can be done to help out in this situation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Any other discussion? I've got a little bit of problem with this. I have no problem with Alliance Club, obviously. And go ahead and mumble away, Martha, I can see you. Yes. Anyways, but my problem in this is that we have someone there who has been operating there, and I think my suggestion was Laura, Laura, there haven't been any problems with that particular person who's applied for the permit, and they went through the permit process, and once they were up and running, have there been any problems with that particular site?
We have not.
Aside the competitive issues we were talking about?
No, we have not had any issue. They have complied with the parameters of the farmer's market while operating the 2014, 2015 season.
Now, the reason I ask that is because I myself look at that, and I know that the Alliance Club does wonderful things, they're awesome people, awesome company, you need to raise funds, I get all that. But the way I kind of look at it is through an application process like we would in any other circumstance. Somebody's been operating a business, they've been doing things, and it is a business, and they make a reapplication, we would like to do it again, and we need a good reason so far as why they're doing something other than outcompeting someone else. I have a little bit of a problem with that. Counsel, you can, we can put this off and do what you want to do, that's fine. But I'm just saying that at its, at the crux of this issue, I think a lot of us, I see a lot of this come back that, I had somebody that thought the dry cleaners down the way down there was mad at me because the city allowed Tide to come into the area and is ruining their business. There's a certain lot of inherent competition that happens even in not-for-profits. There are a lot of not-for-profits that don't like each other, and they compete with each other, especially when it comes to the carrying in need of people, which is kind of weird, but that's fine. So that's, I just want to mention that, okay?
This has been an ongoing conversation since 2013. Staff has been trying to work with both applicants as much as possible to help them through the permit process. It did come to council twice. The first time it came to council, council's direction to staff was for staff to work with local routes to pick a different day other than Saturday to operate their market, so as not to be in competition with the Alliance Club. At the time, the local routes organization decided that they would not be able to run a market on Saturdays. We did receive emails from chamber members and from RLR, the new management company for the promenade, indicating they were unhappy with that. We continued to work with the Lions Club. The Lions Club did run a market at the Benita Commons that year, and they came to council, and we, council gave direction to staff again to make sure to work with the Lions Club to try to let them permit their farmer's market to be able to operate and sell items outside the scope of the farmer's market. At that time, staff did work at council's direction to also look at a flea market ordinance to allow them to continue to operate the following year. Local routes did come and reapply at that time, and this was this past year, both ran, well, the local routes ran a successful market and were very happy and would like to come back again. They do have a permit in currently, and I have met with the Lions Club. They do not have an application in at this time, but they will, they would like to also go for a farmer's market permit. There's nothing prohibiting both markets from operating within the city ordinances at this time.
Alright, and I think at the crux of this, I'm just, don't want to belabor this, but I think it's worth discussing, since it's here, obviously, is that right now, the local routes operates as a farmer's market.
Mm-hmm.
The Lions Club operates as a flea market, which allows them to do everything. They can vegetables, materials, all kinds of things. The farmer's market-
Is restrictive.
Only produce is all they're allowed to do.
Yes.
And so, and so, I'm trying to figure out if it's, okay, we're going to put this off so that we can, what?
Well, staff would be happy to do whatever council pleases for us, to go back and work with the applicants. What we've found in the past is both applicants still want the same day, which is Saturday, and they still want to operate within the same timeframe. So we have reviewed this-
So if that's, if that's still, what we're trying to do here is get them to go on separate days? Do you see any compromise there that is available?
Based on the past experiences, no, I do not.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out, what are we going to accomplish by pushing this can down the road?
And, you know, to me, an obvious question is, and those that know a lot more about it, it's either obvious or not obvious at all. Why don't we just all go to the same location?
Uh...
At the same time on the same day?
What do you mean by that?
The, that is, that is a question, I believe when the new management company came in for the promenade, they gave the lease to a different organization to run their market.
But I mean, you know, that's, that could be a potential solution.
You, but, explain, you mean, why don't we put the Lions Club and the other one at the same place?
Is that at all feasible?
No, because, no.
Just not at all space-wise?
Don't worry, it's okay. I would jump out there and say, no, that's not going to happen.
I would not think that it would be. That would be up to the property management company. And in the past, I believe that they did decide that they would lease the property to local routes and not the Lions Club.
So that's at that location. How about another location?
We have offered to work with the Lions Club to look at other locations to operate their market. They did move to the Benita Commons.
Right.
And now they are at the Greyhound Track. You know, we hope to be able to do what we can to help the Lions and their organization, at the same time offering any other applicant to come and apply for a farmer's market.
Okay, Stephen?
Okay, Laura, if we defer this to next meeting, do you in your heart think that anything will change in terms of Lions Club or the other one?
The only thing that I could foresee happening is if the Lions Club wanted to change their hours on a Saturday, but you're not considering their application at this time, you're considering the local routes application, and the local routes organizers have indicated they would not be able to operate a market at any other day of the week or time. So you could pull the permit and not allow them to apply, they could apply but not approve it at this time, but I don't foresee changing of any hours or location.
Well, before I go to Steve, refresh our memory here collectively. When did we have to make this decision by for local markets to, local, whatever it is, routes to keep continuing on?
They have applied early. They will be operating from October until May.
Okay, so there is a little time here.
Yes, there is.
Okay, alright, yeah, Steve?
I want the Lions Club to know, we're really in a pickle here. You know, I personally am in a pickle, because as a Rotary Club member, I fund scholarships all the time. And there are years when we can't do it, and it kills me. But we don't have the funds some years to do it. It's a matter of, are we going to be able to support what we want to do locally or not, and can we support the free market enterprise? I mean, you guys are competing, the Lions Club's competing against another organization. Obviously, it's for-profit, but the whole purpose of free enterprise is to allow people to determine where they want to go. So if it's a different position, a different location, a different time, then let's find out what's best for you. I don't want to give out the scholarships, I don't want to do that. But we are infringing on the rights of people in terms of a free market and what the ordinance is including. So I don't know kicking down the road is the right answer, but if we can find some sort of resolution that allows both to operate under the free market enterprise, then I'm all for that. If it's not, then let's go.
Well, and to go a little further down to that, the Lions Club's always been really successful with what you've been doing and stuff like this. Take the Rotary Club, for instance, again, you ought to try selling Christmas trees at Christmas time. Guess who sells Christmas trees? Everybody, everybody. Can you imagine if Rotary Club came in here, and you better not. Can you imagine a Rotary Club came in here and said, you know what, I want to pass an ordinance to where the only people who sell Christmas trees is Rotary Club?
Let me just assure you, I'm not coming in here to say I want to sell Christmas trees.
[laughing]
Because it's like moving lumber in one of the Home Depot stores.
It's exactly moving lumber.
That's exactly right. But it is the same concept.
Just wanted to make that point.
It's the same concept. And the problem we've had with Christmas trees, and we've been doing as long as you've been doing, longer probably than you've been doing, maybe, but at least 20 years, on Christmas trees, and every year it's more difficult, because people can come in under prices. They find different locations that people can get to easier. So if there's an answer, then let's find the answer, but let's not jeopardize the position of free markets and free enterprise.
Okay. Carl, you had something first?
Just a note here, and you've heard it previously even from the Lions Club, and that is, it really, to me too, is also an issue of current location. I think their visibility is significantly diminished from either the crossroads or from Benita Beach Road. That is unfortunate. So the possibility of a new location might help this, but we don't know where that location would be and how well it will actually function if we can actually find one. But we are prepared to try to assist with that.
Oh, okay.
All right?
Good. Bill?
I come from the private sector, and knowing that, whatever, what's the name of the company? Roots?
Local Roots.
Local Roots.
Local Roots.
They also have five other locations. So they're obviously successful in more than one location. And my empathy goes out to the Lions Club, because the fact is that the revenues that they produce are, come back to the community in helping other people. And I would strongly recommend that we, Local Roots has had an opportunity, they're obviously run their organization fine, but I think we really need to take care of our home folks in this situation. So I'd like to extend it or talk about it and come up with some solution. But they do have five other locations. It sounds like they're expanding all the time. And they're a good company, I'm not questioning that. But I do think we have to look out for the local people.
Okay, there's a, is there a motion to second?
Yes.
Okay, to defer it, right? Okay, and anybody else?
I was just going to say quickly, and you folks know this, but if visibility's the problem, there are other locations, I have to believe. Look at, look at Benita Beach Road and 41. I mean, you know, isn't there some, there might be some space in there? What about over, okay, I mean, okay.
Okay, alright, well, good. But the main thing is, is at this point, to defer it, to allow some more, talk to next meetings, to let everybody talk about it a little bit more. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Well, my main concern, before we changed the ordinance, were they both allowed to be on the same day, same time, or did we allow that to happen when we changed the ordinance?
Under the current farmer's market ordinance, there's nothing, they can both operate the markets. If we had never put the flea market ordinance together, a private organization could run a farmer's market, as well as a nonprofit organization could run a farmer's market on the same day.
It was the flea market ordinance, because what happened was the farmer's market ordinance was not the activity that the Lions Club was doing. They were doing activities that were in the farmer's market, but they expanded it to do additional activities.
So the ordinance was a combination of what the Lions Club wanted to do?
Yes.
That's correct.
The ordinance that we, that council asked for us to look at was to make sure that we could work with the Lions Club to allow them to be able to sell items outside the scope of the farmer's market ordinance. Because the farmer's market ordinance is prohibitive with items outside of green items.
Right.
And they were selling antique-type items, more flea market-type items. That's where we had hoped that we would be able to, creating a new ordinance would help them.
So the same time, same day issue was a council issue, we didn't want to see the...
Yes. Well, and the first recommendation from staff was, we didn't want them to have a competitive market, we wanted to work through it and try to help our local Lions. We did that, and we worked through, you know, we had another applicant that came back in, and other organizations that also wanted to see that applicant operate at the promenade. And at that time, we thought we'd found a solution for both markets.
And if both were prospering, we wouldn't be hearing this right now, so that's probably it. Okay, so we have motion to second to go ahead and allow these talks that we're having to continue in a better venue than this. Anything else? Hello?
If it is being deferred, are we deferring it to a time specific or just...
Next meeting.
Would the next meeting be fine, Counsel?
Next meeting, two meetings.
Yeah, well, next meeting if at all possible. And if you need to kick it down the road a little bit because you can't get anywhere, that's fine.
Okay.
Because we're not going to run into, what was it, May? April, May?
May.
Okay. Alright, good. We have motion to second, any other discussion? And this is to defer this particular one. Roll call.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Okay. And everybody, please try to be as patient as possible with this. We do want to do the right thing, we do want everybody to be successful, so if we can help anyway, that's what we want to do. Okay, good. Laura, you're on. Sorry. Thank you very much. Okay, now, where are we at?
Public comment.
We are at public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak on any city item, please come forward.
Grant Lundberg, Benita Springs. I just want to comment on Paradise Avenue and Shangri-La and Cockle Shell Drive. I'm a maintenance manager just one block from that intersection. And we have 124 units. And a long time ago, they said they were going to put, continue to sidewalk where it ends on our property going into Benita Pines Club. That's where the sidewalk ends. There is no sidewalks going south to get to Shangri-La on either side. Every morning, 14 kids stand in that corner where the culverts are almost down in the ravine, is almost four feet down from any side of the blacktop. And when that school bus comes to go north, he makes that swing, you better not be parked going south in that white lane waiting for that stop sign for him. You got to back up to leave that bus go, and he puts them lights on right there, and he picks up them 14 kids. You got cars coming this way with no stop sign, just, guy's going that way, going east, same way. And that bus is still, part of his bumper is still looking out of that intersection. So if you sit there, you just sit there. And I'm telling you, this morning, we sat there coming here, I come down Paradise, I live off of Paradise, I work off of Paradise, and it was a blessing to have that street, believe me. But there is, I'd say, a problem at that intersection waiting to happen, like just down 041 in Cockle Shell. I don't know if you ever keep records of how many accidents happened up there, but just in the last 30 days, I've seen five accidents on that intersection. Running red lights, not getting used to making that turn around Hope Lutheran Church to go east on Shangri-La. They get to that intersection, and where that right turn comes up north off of 041 to get onto Shangri-La, that's a U right away. Those people got exactly 120 feet to get over to the left lane to get up Cockle Shell. And it's just like crisscrossing, and zoom, there they are going down Shangri-La. And there we have that first intersection, no stop sign going east or west. But get down a little bit further going east, yes, we have a stop sign. Right there, it's- Right there, it's close quarters, no sidewalk on either side. That's where the sidewalk ends. You go a little further east, and there you have a crossword with two people on a sign. Now they take the sidewalk off the north end, run it to the south end, and then nothing. No sidewalk. There we have a ravine again, trench. Kids are coming down to meet the school bus. And you go at night, last night I come through there about 11 o'clock, I mean, it's dark. And here are two people, are walking a dog, and here's a little kid on a bike, no path to go on, and that street is very narrow where they ended, when they finish going east on Shangala. Then you get further up the road, there's a stop sign. You look to your left, you look down there, what is there? 10 houses down there? And you blacktop that street, it used to be gravel, they blacktop that street. There you have a stop sign, east and west, going right there. When you get to the next one, it's Hawthorne, Hawthorne down there, that's where another one should be. Because that's where Hawthorne takes all their traffic out, brings all their traffic in. Thank you.
Thanks, Grant. Anyone else this time on any city item? Please come forward.
Good morning, for the record, Kathy McGrath. I think you all remember Christina Tappero, reporter for the news press. Well, Christina has asked me to say hello and send her best regards. It was kind of a quick departure. Christina's husband, Chris O'Pierdy, also a reporter, has obtained a wonderful new job in Miami-Dade area with media for the Miami Board of Realtors, and they have moved over to Miami where her family is. And I had the pleasure of seeing Christina last weekend. As a matter of fact, she, we invited she and her husband and the two little girls to a birthday celebration, part of my family. But she says she will miss everyone, and she said 10 years. I only became acquainted with her after Bob died, and I started becoming involved with city events six years ago, but she was with us a long time. So she just said, sorry she didn't get a chance to say this personally, that she will miss you all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'm really happy for Christina and her husband. It has been said that journalists are the worst-paid people in the world, and don't go to college to become a journalist, and that marketers make all the money. And they have switched from journalism to marketing. They represent the Board of Realtors on the other side. I'm going to follow them. No. Alright, Dever McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. I'd like to talk about the gardens again. I think because we're heading into an election cycle that some people's consciences have been clouded over. And you just gave a loan to an unproven company, and the statement was made, we know these people, they're reputable. Well, Jeff Cottonamp was reputable, and so were the gals with the VR Labs and their herbal vitamins. And they had a glitzy pro forma, and they went before the county, and they got a $5 million incentive, and they built a building that never got finished and got foreclosed on. But the county doesn't get that money, the bank does. What happens if these people fail? Do I want them to fail? Absolutely not. Do I like the idea that we would have a gardens finally? Me? Yes. I just think it was wrong. It was too creative, it was too spontaneous, you didn't think about it, you forgot all about VR Labs, and it is a mistake. Even if it's successful, it is a mistake to do this with taxpayers' money.
Anyone else this time? Please come forward. I kind of like that we finally got accused of being too creative. I just, I'm going to wear that like a, unreal.
Ben Hirschen, so I'll tell you, for those who sit at home and don't know about these meetings, and they say that bureaucracy is really horrible, wake up. This is a very action-oriented city council. Thank you, great meeting, you made some great decisions.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ben. Anyone else this time? Please come forward on any city item. Seeing none, let's go ahead and carry on, shall we? Second reading and public hearing, the following ordinance says, that's you, isn't it, our Audrey?
It's me to start, and this is, let me read the title block into the record. This is a City of Benita Springs Backyard Hen Ordinance. Creating an ordinance to allow a limited number of hens on residential property, providing a permit process, revocation, transfer, and enforcement, providing for conflict, inclusion in code, severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. It is not a land development code ordinance, it goes in our regular Benita Springs code, hence this is the one public hearing time where people from the public can speak if they wish to speak. At this time though, I would request Jennifer DeFola-Hagan from Community Development to come up to discuss the ordinance and provide you with any details and any questions. If there's a legal question, I'll have you answer, otherwise Jennifer can answer.
Good morning, Jen Hagan, City of Benita, Community Development, here to answer any questions that you have in regards to the proposed ordinance for the backyard hens. Currently, we have 13 active permits in the city. We have four pending permits. Those are folks that have applied for the permit that are waiting to obtain their hens. And we have had one application withdrawn, and there has been lots of interest in it. I've been receiving a lot of phone calls. Again, you're looking at 17 or so active, almost active permits within the city. You do have a cap of 25. That number is open for discussion. You've read the proposed ordinance, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Yeah.
Jen, in the past, you've said there's been no complaints regarding this. Is that still the case?
We had one complaint. It turned out, though, the complaint was a long neighboring dispute that had gone over, and it was more about it's our-
It's been going on anyway.
Barking dog, correct.
Thank you.
Barking dog. That's next.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? Yeah, Mike?
On page two, it talks about if a resident decides not to continue with their permit, or-
Correct.
If we forcibly tell them they're no longer allowed to have the permit, that they have to find appropriate homes for the hens.
Correct.
Can we make sure that they actually find appropriate homes? Because there's some concern that they just may let them loose in the city.
Rogue, go rogue, right.
And I had, had a complaint over on Pine Street, said that there's a loose hen over there, and then also another one in the state streets for a rooster. That's apparently been there for a while. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when they do end, that we make sure that they find appropriate homes.
And that's your council's pleasure if you want to edit it. I know even before the city was here, there has been ongoing rogue roosters and hens, and code enforcement has been trying and challenged with pursuing a, a solution to that problem. Unfortunately, those hens are not part of this program, so I would entertain any language that you'd want to modify.
If I may, first of all, as Jennifer pointed out, we do have an issue, and code enforcement is working with Lee County Animal Control on resolving the rooster issue on some of those streets and some additional. The ordinance in paragraph six makes it unlawful for a person to just let their hens go rogue, as you said, or roam at large, which is, I think, the word that's normally used for this. And if that happens, the person then violates the ordinance, and any violation of an ordinance can either be a citation through code enforcement or potentially law enforcement on that matter.
Well, my main concern was that we just double-check when they say that, okay, we're done, we're not going to ask for the permit anymore, or we tell them they can't have a permit anymore, that they say, okay, we took the hens here, that we just double-checked to make sure that they actually did what they said with the hens.
These are-
If that's possible.
These are chickens we're talking about, aren't they?
These are backyard hens.
Yeah, you can eat them, right?
That would be one way to resolve how to remove the chicken.
Alright, I'm just checking.
Well, they can't be slaughtered.
Just checking, I want to be sure that they're the kind of animal I'm thinking of because they're delicious. I don't think getting rid of the chickens is going to be an issue. Sorry!
Well, then they could produce a butcher receipt because they can't do it on their-
Produce a receipt? How do you get a receipt? I ate him. Okay.
They're slaughtering on property.
They can't slaughter them on their own property, so.
But nobody saw Henrietta.
Oh.
They'd have to take it to a butcher.
They would.
They'd have to do what?
They'd have to take it somewhere to have it slaughtered, because according to this, they're not allowed to do it on their own property.
Gasp!
How do you feel about parakeets?
It really is illegal to-
Wild turkeys.
Kill a chicken.
I think that people that are going through with this process are, they're responsible people, and they're going to do what's responsible. And from the people that I know that are actually doing this, those hens have become part of their families. They're not, they're named, their kids have named them, they're pets now, so they're not going to just let them go. They're going to make sure they have an appropriate home.
And I want to point out, the city does have a few farms where there are animal ending of life, I guess. Like CNC does catering business based on their animals.
There's places you can take to have your chickens killed.
But would it be too much to ask for just some paperwork saying, you know, we, we gave, we don't, we gave them to this person, or we took them here to have them slaughtered?
Councilmember, we're happy to do that, yes, sir.
Do we need to add that to the ordinance, or just the staff follow up?
No, 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 we need to overthink this a lot.
No, we need to just-
Okay, no, I'm just kidding. Just joking. Okay, anything else? We have a motion in a second? Any other questions, councilors, servants? Roll call.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, before you sit down, this is the last time that this, this has got, this is like 50 times?
How many times has this come up?
We've got more ordinances about chickens than we have chickens.
I'm still waiting your application.
You're going to have a lot of wait.
Ben, one quick thing?
Yeah?
Longheart just wants to know where the old roosters go to retire.
Well, that sounds like a personal problem.
I'll refrain from comment.
Okay, anyway, here we go. Amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, as another amendment to Chapter Four.
Yes, and I will read, this is, the, the last one was not an amendment to Chapter Four, but this one is. So I will read the title block into the record. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, zoning, amending sections 4-1215 through 4-1225 to amend the regulations regarding wireless communication facilities, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, square meters errors, inclusion in code, and an effective date. This is, I'd say, a second reading. It's the second reading that was continued from the second reading on February 18th, 2015, so we did not need to have a new affidavit of publication. We do know that the industry is aware of this because we have received letters, and you received them in your RADA from both AT&amp;T Wireless and from American Towers representative Jenna Loda from Holland and Knight. Without further ado, Mike Fegan will provide a presentation, and if there's legal questions, I'll be happy to help.
Good morning, Councilman Mike Fegan, Community Development. Just a quick little recap for you as to how we got to this position here today. And maybe not, just kidding. Oh, there we go, okay, wrong button. So in the summer of 2014, Jen Hagan, Jay Sweet, and myself came before you to ask your permission to reexamine the wireless communications facility portion of the land development code and to update the standards with regards to land use compatibility, location criteria, development standards, and definitions specifically. What we were seeing is an area where you have rapid technological advances occurring, and we were having an ordinance that was having slight difficulty in keeping up, so we wanted to amend those areas to keep up with the technology. The purpose and the intent from the current ordinance to the proposed ordinance that is before you today has not changed. The overall arch and goal has always been to minimize the impact on the surrounding areas, while also understanding that there is a need for these facilities and to accommodate that need the best we can. One thing that you'll see throughout this presentation and throughout the ordinance is a desire to provide for the co-location and location on existing buildings and existing infrastructure, as opposed to always go the, the new infrastructure route. That was something that was in the current code but wasn't as flushed out as it is in this exist, or, excuse me, in the proposed code now. Of course, we want to encourage, you know, cooperation between service providers, we want to make sure that we are in line with all the federal and state regulations, one of the newest ones which came in December of 2014, a new FCC ruling. And then also, you know, establishing development regulations and location criteria based on all the above intentions. One of the first things that we did was to identify and clarify the definitions of a stealth wireless facility and a camouflage wireless facility. There seemed to be some misinterpretation of what they meant and where the differences lie. People thought there was a lot of overlap, and there is to a certain degree, because they're both designed to help these structures blend into the surrounding area. The difference, as underlined, is with a stealth facility, it has a secondary function. It is concealed, yes, just like a camouflage tower, but it has a secondary function. So that is the difference. Example, a, a bell tower. So a facility that is a bell tower, the bell tower is the secondary function. An antenna facility that is a flagpole, the flagpole is the secondary function. A light fixture, the light fixture is the secondary function. Versus camouflage, it's a tree designed to blend in, really no secondary function. The one on the far right, it's an architectural building feature designed to blend in, no real secondary function. So that was the primary difference between a stealth facility and a camouflage facility that we flushed out in this particular draft of the ordinance before you. Siding priorities. The, the current code has siding priorities that were based on allowing you to, to do first and foremost wanting a new facility that is stealth in nature, and then falling down the line with going for surface-mounted, roof-mounted, and then finally co-locations on existing infrastructure. We wanted to go ahead and change that up and, and to, again, deal with existing infrastructure first and foremost. And this actually goes off of a recommendation that we had with the Technology Advisory Board after meeting with them, in terms of dealing with the existing infrastructure. One of the things that I took away personally from that meeting that was said over and over again was that the days of building a 150-foot galvanized gray monopole are not as prevalent as they used to be. The desire of the industry and the desire of many municipalities is to deal with existing infrastructure, as opposed to creating new infrastructure for the support. Now, obviously, there's going to always be a need for new infrastructure in dead zones and things like that, and this code allows for that as well, but we wanted to make sure that we were flushing out the need to utilize existing infrastructure as well. A perfect example would be the Benita Beach Antennas Club, right there on Benita Beach Road where it turns into Hickory. They have antennas on, on the top of the building. Another example, in Jay Sweet's neck of the woods, another building that has antennas draped off the sides there on the edges, sort of designed to blend in as an architectural building feature. This is really what we would like to see more of within the city. Go, just going back to that one as an example of utilizing a camouflage technique to try to make it blend into a rooftop facility. Now, obviously, we don't have this type of architecture here in the city per se, there Now, obviously, we don't have this type of architecture here in the city per se, there aren't a whole lot of brick buildings within Benita, you know, this is another example, but I wanted to throw these in there as demonstrating where the industry is going in terms of this concealment technology, and that the proposed code before you is able to now keep up with this. Location criteria, the current draft does not address the old forty-one redevelopment area in terms of what can go in there in terms of a wireless facility. Staff felt the need to, to correct, to correct that, excuse me, and we did. The proposed code would only allow a stealth facility if it's going to be a new facility, otherwise, we're looking for a surface-mounted or roof-mounted antenna on existing infrastructure, building, what have you. And of course, because it's, if it's within the old forty-one area, it, there is a design review that goes into it. Additionally, the current code allows you to build a wireless facility in a wetland. Staff feels that that's a little against sound planning principles and practices, since we don't allow any other structures in wetlands without mitigating or buying credits, we feel that cell towers should be treated the same way in, in that regard, that you can't just go into a DEP-designated wetland and build a tower, as passive as it may be. Keeping in line with location criteria, the, the current code lends itself to zoning district priorities in terms of creating the location criteria from most desirable to relatively least desirable. And one of the movements, the large-scale movements that this ordinance, that this ordinance makes is going from zoning to land use. So we changed the location criteria in terms of priorities from zoning to land use. And again, that's in line with the comprehensive plan, that's understanding that if there is such a thing as a hierarchy, that we know it goes land use up at the top, followed by zoning second. And also, this was designed because there are areas within the city where there is a conflict between the zoning of the property and the land use, and understanding that, again, land use is at the top of that hierarchy, it just made sense to have an ordinance that identified this location and siding criteria as land use as opposed to zoning. Again, keeping in mind with that, the, the current dra, or the current code has the zoning development regulations based on the zoning of the city, relatively small table, agricultural, residential, and then all other zoning districts. And again, keeping in mind with what I just said about how we do have some pockets of the city that probably are not zoned correctly, where there's a conflict between the zoning and the land use, we changed the table to reflect that hierarchy for land use. Residential, commercial, industrial, and other land uses, there, there are no prohibitions, so to speak, in any of these categories, there are controls on the types of structures that we prefer you to put in a residential area, or in a commercial, industrial, or other land use area, but there are no outright prohibitions in this code because the federal guidelines prohibit that. So that, this was probably the single biggest change that we made, making the switch from zoning to land use to keep in line with the comp plan and to avoid any further conflicts between zoning and land use, going with land use seemed to make the most sense from the staff perspective. A few other points of interest, like, like I said earlier on, there was an FCC ruling that came out late in December of 2014 that allowed for certain types of modifications to be made to wireless facilities, whether it was co-location, or the potential to possibly add additional height to an existing facility that goes a little bit beyond what the table represents, and we want to allow the applicant to provide the evidence that, that an exemption is, is, is applicable in any particular case. The current code does not have that in there, this draft does allow for that to keep, to keep pace. You know, aside from that, we did up, update some of our definitions of base station, land use, co-location provider, which were definitions that we took from the FCC ordinance. Again, moving the, the scope from existing infrastructure, using roof-mounted facilities, especially on common elements, this goes actually back to something else the tab was saying, one of the examples that came up was Village Walk, and how when you get that far east of I-75, the, depending on your carrier, your coverage is sketchy at best. And the current code has no allowance for rooftop structures on common elements such as a town center, and we wanted to go ahead and, and correct that, so we did that in this draft of the code that is before you today to allow for such a thing. Also, the Port Authority has a requirement now that any structure above a hundred-and-twenty-five feet needs a tall structures permit from the Port Authority. It was part of our application, it was never written into the ordinance since that came in 2011, and this ordinance has not been updated in almost a decade. So we wanted to go ahead and put that in there now so that it, it is in line with the tall structures permit requirement from the Lee County Port Authority. A few other minor things that we threw in there regarding the balloon test, with the new structures, there is a submittal requirement of a balloon test where it sounds just like what you think it is, where the proposed site of the tower's gonna go, they go out there and they fly a balloon so we can see the proposed height, they take pictures from various places around the site, various distances away from the site, so we can get a, an all-encompassing view of what it's going to look like in the surrounding area. And we now have a requirement that before we're going to find your application sufficient, we, we need to see that, that is a pertinent part of the application. So to conclude, we have the new definitions of, and we clarified the definitions between stealth and camouflage respectively, the new siding priorities, again, that goes back to utilizing existing infrastructure as opposed to new, which I do want to make clear, we do still have allowances for new infrastructure, that's what that table was, that was to help to deal with the new infrastructure need for the city. Also identifying, you know, land use in terms of using that to determine tower height and tower type, the Port Authority requirement, allowing for roof-mounted common element facilities, keeping in line with the new FCC guidelines, the balloon test requirements, that's really it in a nutshell, in terms of the, the biggest changes of this particular ordinance from one draft to the other. And with that, any questions or comments that you have for myself, Audrey, Jay Sweet, we are here to answer them.
Nice job.
Thank you very much. Yes, Audrey?
I, just to, and Mike, you did a fabulous job, I just want to point out, we did meet with the industry, it was a pretty large meeting on February thirteen, 2015, and the industry was very helpful in providing us with copies, well, telling us about some of the, the executive order, the FCC executive order and the Spectra Act, and then we went through and digested the hundred-and-fifty pages of the executive order, it was quite lengthy, and some of it applicable to local government, some of it not applicable to local government. As you've also read in the green sheet, we've also talked about the state statute and tried to hammer that in home, because our ordinance, the prior ordinance predated the state statute, but a lot of what the industry, when we met with the industry in two thousand and six, what, during the, or two thousand and five, when we met with the industry back then, we incorporated, integrated, and then when they created the E-911 statute, they included that type of language. To try to keep the ordinance current and relevant, we did make changes, the change in the draft, in the physical document, to show the difference of the two changes are marked in yellow, so anything in yellow resulted from after your last meeting. And another clause, and this is just lawyer coming out, so bear with me, we have a different conflicts law than you normally have, we wanted to make it very clear that if there is a specific preemption within either the E-911 law, which is the state statute, or within what we call the Spectrum Act, which has been codified in the FCC executive order when they did their rulemaking, then those will apply. Now, what is interesting, and in the letters that you have received from the industry, you received the letter from Jenna Loda, which we provided in errata, along with the letter from AT&amp;T, just chipping and saying, hey, I agree with her, you'll see she'll keep talking inconsistencies, inconsistencies. We don't always agree with her, that's an issue of lawyers making argument and other lawyers making argument back, and there might be points that she does have merit, but they're not, and where we did see merit, we obviously made changes, but I don't think everything in her letter raises to a point that I would have to say I have a hundred percent agreement with. So we have that conflict language in there that we can review on a case-by-case if it's applicable. Otherwise, if we made all the changes that she had requested, we probably would have about a three-hundred-page ordinance here today. So, let's keep it a little more simple, and that's why we have that conflict provision in there, so we can address those issues, if there are some that have merit.
Okay, good. Council, any questions or comments or concerns?
Not, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Not really, but the, our touchstone for reality is our technical advisory board, and John, do you want to talk a little bit about what they've decided and talked about?
Yeah, and I think Mike already indicated that when staff met with the technical advisory board early on, they had some very pointed comments to make about direction and purpose and some of the modifications, and those have been incorporated. In particular, the idea of siding on existing structures as opposed to having a priority to put up new giant poles. We've been copying the board with the changes as it's gone through its evolution, I haven't heard anything back, they meet again on Monday, but I'm comfortable at this point that they've been tracking the changes and are okay with the, the final product.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to public comment, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to public comment this time, any member of the public wishing to speak at this time on this matter only, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, we have a motion?
Motion.
In a second.
And a motion in a second to approve any other discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackdo.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Long Card.
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, what else you have for us?
Nothing else, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We are up to the City Manager's Report. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, we presented for the council's review the monthly financial reports, as we do monthly. Item B, we have pulled, we will reschedule that for April first discussion. And then the only thing else that I have personally before we turn it over to John for item C, is I'm pleased to announce that in connection with our downtown revitalization efforts, that our sixty percent plans that council authorized us to move to will be presented at a public forum, once again, on March thirty-first, at Community Hall downtown, from four to seven PM. Okay, and that will be the presentation of the sixty percent plans, and we invite the public to come out, take a look, be as involved as you were at thirty percent, this is all very important, and we're very excited by the direction it's headed. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, hold on one second, yes, Steve, go ahead.
I, I know the answer to this, Carl, but if we could have Matt come up, one of the previous meetings I asked that we go through and do one more run-through on the local businesses to make sure that the things we were doing around, roundabouts and so on were not going to be counterproductive to their businesses, and I know Matt's done that, I'd like for him to come back and talk, mention to the council, if that's okay with you?
Sure. Matt Feeney, for the record, yes, sir, we, we, myself and some of the members from the right team met with some local business owners actually yesterday to, to go over some concerns with the roundabout in Pennsylvania in particular. I think that we had a very healthy discussion, we have some homework to do in terms of verifying the width of the designed entrance for them, I think we've been able to meet the functional requests that they had in terms of ensuring that a left-hand turn lane can be made, ensuring that garbage trucks can access the back of their property to, to do dumpsters. I think there are some fundamental issues, one of the, one of the folks is really not a, not a big proponent of roundabouts, but I think that we were able to, to address their concerns.
Yeah, and thank you, because my only concern was, there are gonna be some people don't like it, some that do, but my concern was that we not do something unintentionally to, to do poorly with the businesses involved, so thank you for doing that, thank you.
Okay, very much. Okay, John, you're on.
So, item C is the plan of action relative to the recommendations from the Water Task Force, and as you know, as a recent meeting, council took the thirty-four recommendations, boiled that down to twenty-nine. So each of the attachments that you have in front of you is a one-page summary basically of each of the adopted recommendations, showing the language that was adopted, the vote count, and then you'll see at the very bottom, a brief summary of what staff intends to do, and what we tried to do here was identify for you the responsible party or parties, a brief description of what it might entail, for example, changes to the land development code, and then generally speaking, again, a timetable for us to pursue this, and the timetable seems to have gotten the attention of some of the folks in the community, and I want to be able to, to try to reassure folks that all we were doing here, and again, this was a result of staff meeting on multiple occasions to kind of sort through these recommendations, what we were trying to do is, is group them into three categories. One is items that you can expect to see within the next couple of months come back to you, items which may take about up to a year to implement and get going because of the complexity, and some which frankly are much more long-term in nature because things like a multi-jurisdictional approach to a multimillion-dollar project regarding drainage under I-75, as you can imagine, that's not something that you're gonna see happen overnight. So generally speaking, again, the, the categories are within a few months, within the year, and then more long-term. Another tool that we're developing is kind of a spreadsheet matrix that we can then send back to council on a periodic basis, that shows you where we are, how we're doing in terms of meeting those goals, where the projects are going, if we've run into any particular complications or unforeseen, you know, obstacles in getting those things done. I also want to point out that some of the things which are on the more short-term nature might involve resolutions that will be bringing back to council, all of these, or at least most of these, at some point will be coming back to council for action, in other words, this is not the last time you're gonna see a lot of these, it's just an indication of the first steps. Resolutions will come back to you, hopefully you'll approve the language that we're suggesting, those resolutions then go off to other jurisdictions in some cases. That doesn't mean it's the end of our job, obviously, we've identified those as being more of an administrative responsibility rather than, for example, public works, and we intend to keep on those things. In other words, if a resolution is passed by council as a result of these recommendations that talks about encouraging a particular policy be followed, we intend to follow that and make sure and be able to report back to you on where that's going, so it's not, again, the last time you'll see this, these are things that we'll be living with and hopefully developing with your help over a long period of time.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for, or comments for John, anything? John, I think it's a, it's a good and reasonable and, and quite lucid argument that you make for these things, and, and it really keeps, keeps everything moving forward in a way I think that is respectful of what the committee wanted and what council's ultimate desires were, and I, I don't know, I think, I think you've targeted this pretty, pretty rationally.
Well, I, if I can make one last editorial comment, and a lot of this goes to the hard work and dedication of that group of people that was on your task force, they really did an incredible job, and I was very proud to have worked with them.
Okay, and I just think that it's very, very reasonable. All right, yeah, council, any comment? All right, let's see, and is this something we need to go ahead and adopt, adopt, or we just need to recognize it?
Frankly, I think I've gotten direction from you, it sounds like we have.
Yeah, carry on.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Okay, anything else, the City Manager Report?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, good deal, and I'm glad to hear you're over your cold, oh my gosh, I called him on Sunday, which he loves, by the way, so call him as often as possible on Sunday. And I didn't think it was him, his voice had just went like, it probably wasn't you, you have an imposter that you give your phone to, don't you?
On Sundays.
Was it?
Only on Sundays.
Only on Sundays, but oh my gosh, I'm so glad you're.
I'm feeling better, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Excellent, good to hear. Okay, now we are to Mayor and Councilmember, items report, and we don't have anything on here except for just going to each member, Bill, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I'd like to comment the opportunity to go to Tallahassee, and it was quite an experience, if you weren't walking much before you went to something like that, you certainly get the experience of possibly even losing maybe a couple pounds, going up and down, and of course, our, our consultant was very informative, and she obviously knows her way about, and I saw her in action for the first time physically, and she was, she was everywhere, and she probably knew more people than God. It was interesting to see her technique, and I was impressed, and of course, the plane ride was the most exciting part, and having Steve, Steve Slacko on board to, to share with me the altitudes and the speed and all that, it was quite, quite interesting. And I wanted to know how the, the, I was away for the cleanup, I didn't see anything, what was the amount you picked up?
Oh, I don't know, Laura, do you have anything on that?
No, just, I mean, I'm just interested to see.
Had the greatest turnout that the city has ever had.
We had, we had over four hundred people register and help that day.
Oh, that's wonderful.
But I don't know what we've got.
As far as amount of garbage.
We did, we had a record number of attendees that came out to help us with our cleanup, and Joanne Lawrence did that, she did an amazing job at putting it together, Patrick helped her, and I know councilmembers came out, so we were very excited and looking forward to continuing that tradition for our city.
Yeah, well, I, I missed it, and I, and I've always enjoyed walking down the beach and trying to find a cigarette butt, at least on the beach, never, haven't been.
Different cleanup, but.
Different, yeah, but it, but yeah, but I usually, when's the?
That's where you go, you go down to the beach when we do this?
Parks out in front of docks.
One other point, when is the, the one for the road, when do we, is that February? I, I think I missed that one, too.
Oh, well, the one we just did was the downtown one, the one for the beach cleanup is right in.
We have it usually in August, but it, we put, we put in for a special event permit application, so we, we'll let you know.
Okay.
We'll wait till it's really hot so that we can do the one on the beach.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Bill?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, what do you have for us today?
Oh, pass, I'm good.
Good, okay, Peter?
I'm okay, just happy belated, happy St. Patrick's Day to Matt Feeney and his fellow Irish out there, had a great event last night in town, and wish everybody well.
Thank you very much. Stephen, we'll go down to you down there at the very end down there, hey.
Down there at the very end, thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead, what do you got?
Just two things, Go Eagles, FGCU women's basketball team seeded number seven in the region NCAA playoffs, congratulations, great year, great advertising for a great university. And secondly, I wanted to report that the mayor and I had a chance to have dinner in the governor's mansion with a small group of people, and the governor was pleased that the mayor was so well-behaved that night, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, for.
He wasn't there all night.
Thank you very much, there, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Yeah, Janet?
Let's see, first things first, as liaison to the Historical Preservation Board, I want to give council an update on their Historic Preservation Assistance Grant Program, and, you know, you guys graciously allowed us some money to bring that project back, and what I'd like to let you know is that we have one designated property now that is going forward with a grant, we have three more in the pipeline, and two non-designated properties that are considering becoming designated so that they could apply for funds, so that's awesome, that's a great, great turnout for bringing that project back, so thank you for that. I wanted to make sure that you've all had an opportunity to see, and if not, please go down and check at the Lyles Hotel, we have that new piece of art that was installed, Slices of Heaven, it's the vertical stacking of the orange slices, it's awesome, and I've heard from folks that coming down all the way from Pennsylvania, you see it, so it's generating a little bit of interest, and it's an awesome piece, so it's great to see. This Saturday night is the Crew Concert in downtown Riverside Park, and I know that Mount Nelson Marine is a spot to get tickets prior to, up till Friday, and then tickets are available at the door, and that's. And that's always a very nice event downtown. And then I had the opportunity to visit Sarasota last week, so I sought out some of their roundabouts, and it was interesting to see, and they work well, as Ben has mentioned many times, that he's been onto those roundabouts also. So it was good to see, and it's, I think it's going to work here. I think it's going to be, it's going to be awesome for us, too. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes, based on the last council meeting, the council asked that we defer to meet with the Lions Club and discuss the naming of the softball field. We have already done that, but we're looking at some other alternatives, so we will be meeting next month, and hopefully we'll have a recommendation back to the council.
Thank you for your work on that, Steve. Council really appreciates that, I'm sure. Anything else?
That's it.
I've just got a couple of things here. I just wanted to work with staff on here afterwards, but I also just want to bring everyone's attention. Racetrack Road, next to the racetrack, not coincidentally, I believe, that road, and this is because we've been talking about sidewalks, and I have to tell you, every day, everybody does a really good job of talking about sidewalks and passing resolutions. Everyone does, everyone does, and that's fine. But we have a hard time actually doing something, it seems like at times, and it gets a little irritating, and it, I know it takes time to do these things. Racetrack Road goes down past the racetrack and goes to the industrial parks, and there's a lot of industrial back in there. And it is, it is in the morning, at 6:00 in the morning, well, probably 5:30, all the way to 7:30, there are dozens and dozens and dozens of men on bicycles driving down the middle of that road in the dark, no sidewalk, all the way down the end of the thing. And how we can talk about complete streets on Bonita Beach Road and every place else, and all, every place else that's already got sidewalks, and yet those places where people's lives, people's livelihoods actually rely on them riding a bicycle, I think that's what we're trying to get at, they're doing that, but they're not getting any attention or help. And that's really, you know, when you talk about, that really frustrates me to not be able to get any attention for something like that, nor any much attention, and I'm going to bring this up at the joint MPO meeting, for Old 41 all the way down between Collier and Lee Counties. That has been on the back burner, and that road has not significantly changed in 70 years. 70 years, that, in the two fastest-growing counties, Lee and Collier County, probably in the United States, one of the fastest-growing ones, and that, the connector between the two, and there's no sidewalk or bike path on that, and no plans. No plans to do anything. No plans. So that has to stop. I mean, so, counsel, let's all strive. Let's all just, you know, let's, this passing resolutions and the mayor's challenges and stuff, let me tell you what the mayor's real challenge is to actually get something done. That's the real challenge behind that, is to actually get a bike path where people can get out of the road. So let's try to focus on that, too, okay? We can really help people. All right, and there you have it. And approval of minutes. Anyone wish to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Make a motion in a second over here for Bill. Roll call.
Councilman Slackta?
Hi.
Mayor Nelson?
Hi.
Councilman Simmons?
Hi.
Councilman Gibson?
Hi.
Councilman Longcart?
Hi.
Councilman McIntosh?
Hi.
Councilwoman Martin?
Hi.
Okay, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at this time on any city matter, please come forward.
Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. I want to be sure I saw and heard what we did today. You gave an infant nonprofit an unsecured business loan based on someone telling you, we know these folks and a glossy pro forma, and you all feel happy about it. Number two, there is no joint liability clause for each board member to guarantee the loan. There are no assets to pledge the loan. It is an unsecured loan, and there's no way to get the money back if they do default. I don't think they're going to default. I just think that this loan is wrong. You've just damaged the near-perfect reputation of the city of Bonita Springs.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? There were a couple of things that I think would need to be clarified from the statement she made. Would you like to do that?
I do. Yes, thank you. First of all, the type of loan this is called is a nonrecourse loan, so she is correct in the sense that we do not require personal liability, nor does council have to pledge their personal assets when council makes decisions on doing things. Secondly, it is secured by the value of the property, which, as you heard from the city manager, is in excess. So if they default on the loan, we obtain the property. Now, I know that is not what the city manager wants, but I will tell you.
So far as getting the property back?
That's correct. I mean, he does not want to have to maintain that property, and I understand his position. Now, I just want to answer one thing, and that is, the city manager and I spoke prior to the meeting, and we discussed this at length, several of the different issues, and one of those issues is what is the worst-case scenario, because that is something that is of concern. It's not something, when you were asking Ms. Leonard the questions, it's not something she envisions, but it is something that the city manager and I always have to think about. And what I explained to him, and I would encourage you to look at, and it's actually where Christina Sapero lives now, is take a look at the Village of Pinecrest, because Parrot Jungle, one of those places, Dennis Church did not mention it, but it's one of the places very similar, was created in 1936, the same year that the Wonder Gardens was created. They moved to be closer to the Cruises. Yes, all the animals, the orangutan and all the cute little animals, went from one portion of Miami, Florida, we call Miami, but Metro Dade, from the Village of Pinecrest, which was incorporated just three years before the city of Bonita Springs, to Watson Park, which is another place in Metro Dade County.